Good evening. Today is Wednesday, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, and this is the U.S. Chicago Council meeting. The time is now six P.M. And can we please rise for meeting session two?
First District Councilwoman Monica Gonzalez.
Yes.
Third District Councilman Jared Hill.
Here.
Fourth District Councilwoman Stacy Winfield. Fifth District Councilman Robert Garcia. Sixth District Councilwoman Gilda Orange.
Here.
Councilman Art Womack.
Right there.
Eighth District Woman in Large Vanessa Hernandez Orange.
Right there.
Councilman in Large Kenneth Monroe.
Here.
Can we please note that Councilwoman Winfield as well as Councilwoman Franciske stated that they were unable to have meetings. And now provide your chair for meeting. First item on the agenda would be the minutes of council. Right?
Minutes for regular meeting September twenty-fourth, year twenty twenty-five. Public hearing and regular meeting October eighth, twenty twenty-five. We'll move. Second.
Councilman Garcia makes a motion. Councilman Monroe seconded his motion. Are there any questions? Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield. Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Stand.
Ransford.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes. Any communications from the mayor?
I have none.
Communications from the department?
We have. Council Payroll Warrant. One zero zero two two five C.C. One zero zero seven two five C.C. One zero zero nine two five C.C. One zero one zero two five C.C. One zero two 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 five C.C. And one zero two 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 five L.A. We'll move. Second.
Move by Councilman Hill, second by Councilman Monroe. Are there any questions? Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Garcia, no. Orange.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Payroll warrant by weekly, one zero one zero two five. We'll move. Uh, man, break. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Garcia. And then, you know, second by Councilman Monroe. Any questions? Mr. Clerk?
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Garcia, yes. Orange. Ransford.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes. Are there any community reports? Any more reports? Ordinances on first reading?
We have four ordinances on first reading. First ordinance on first reading, twenty-five, that zero zero one five. Council Mayor Anthony Copeland. An ordinance enacting proposed amendments to the system of user fees for operation and maintenance of the city's stormwater system. We'll move on first reading, that's what we're doing.
Right there. First motion was made by Councilwoman Garcia, the second by Councilwoman Orange. Are there any? Questions? Councilman Hill.
No, you made a comment. I'm just gonna move.
Sure. Sure, um, so I had a conversation with Attorney Elabredy, who asked if he could, uh, first saw on to have someone from Indianapolis as well as him come to speak on item fifteen and item sixteen for the stormwater. Um, there was some type of miscommunication um, on Fridays when I should have been posted, so because it wasn't properly posted, there was no one, they're not even so confident. So if we pass this on first reading, then we'll make sure to have it properly posted as a work session. Uh, because it did fall under anything regards to executive session. Um, and I will follow up with our president to make sure that this happens. Any other questions? Uh, clerk, roll call please.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Garcia, yes. Orange.
Yeah.
Ransford.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Next ordinance on first reading. Order is twenty-five, that zero zero one six, Council Mayor Anthony Copeland. In ordinance enacting proposed amendments to the system of user rates charges for the support of the operation and maintenance of each county or sanitary district. We'll move on first reading, and then, bro.
Second, Councilwoman Garcia makes a motion for approval. Councilwoman Gonzalez seconded the motion. Any questions? Roll call please.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Garcia, yes. Orange.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yeah.
Monroe.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Next ordinance on first reading, twenty-five, that zero zero one nine, Council Mayor Anthony Copeland. In ordinance amending ordinance number twelve, that zero zero one three. Establishing fee schedule for furnishing to get reports and documents. We'll move on first and second.
There's, there's a motion by Councilwoman Garcia and a second by Councilman Monroe for first and second. Are there any questions? Can we have? Um, the, that, in Steve's ordinance or?
Good point.
Uh, ordinance twenty-five, zero zero one.
Happy being.
I don't know who's supposed to kind of speak, but I'm aware of it. It's almost ours.
Brown's behind.
Okay.
You're okay? Okay.
We need, we need this. We need salary ordinance. Um, we are presenting salary orders for twenty twenty-six, um, requesting the salary.
No, they're asking about nineteen.
I'm sorry.
I didn't get back.
I don't know who's supposed to speak at it, but I guess, I know the conversation has been, we haven't updated our fees in here. And because of what's happened with different bills from the, that's fine. The, uh, Indiana government and then the federal government. And we're, we're, we're gonna see, we're gonna see, our budgets are gonna go lower. But we'll receive our revenues in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or maybe the worst ones. So we're dealing with a lot of season towns, we're raising the people we can. To try to catch up to whatever they're gonna do. I think this is part of it. Uh, I know that means we pay, uh, we're getting more and more requests for documents. And these haven't changed anymore. I think it's up to you. And we did do a comparison, but we're literally seeing the charging sort of keep the same.
Thank you. Any questions? Go down. Mr. Clerk? Roll call please.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Garcia, yes. Orange.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-five, that's zero zero two zero, corporations ordinance, federal grants fund, twenty-four zero.
So move on first and second.
Yeah, Councilman Hill made a motion for approval, Councilwoman Orange approved the motion. For approval for first and second, three. And we have.
Uh, Jaylen Robinson, Director of Public Works. So this is a, uh, ordinance for a federal grant for a total of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, forty dollars. This is similar to the grant that we came for early this year. These funds will be used to help increase electric vehicles throughout the season.
You said electric vehicles.
Yes.
Like updated, you said?
Well, it will help us, we'll start, um, obtaining more electric vehicles.
Buy the vehicles, electric.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
How about the infrastructure? Very no matter.
So the infrastructure, we currently do have, um, a grant, a different grant that helps us obtain the charging themselves. Thank you.
Um, Councilman, just let you know, I am part of the NRC as a representative from the city, and this is something that we were working on with them. Um, in the grant, the only thing that was asked is that we had to put the infrastructure for the charging, and that's where the city went out to go and receive a grant for the charging stations, so that it wouldn't be a cost to us yet for able to receive electric vehicles.
It was a level-two charging station, so not a big industrial charge, it's just like.
That's the orange. It can be, um, on third reading tonight, but it can't. The advisory about attorney has said public hearing. Am I right?
Sorry, can you say that again?
This has to have a public hearing.
Yes. Yes. Any other questions? Roll call please.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Garcia, yes. Orange.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes. And ordinances on second reading.
We have two ordinances on second reading. First ordinance on second reading, ordinance twenty-five, that zero zero one seven, Council Mayor Anthony Copeland. An ordinance amending ordinance number fifteen, that zero zero two five. Being an ordinance amending section one five zero point zero eight of the municipal code. Raising the cost of work required in city building permanent as amended.
Council, councilman Hill makes a motion for approval. Second. Mr. Clerk, seconded the motion. Any questions? Councilwoman Garcia.
Jay. I mean, we don't see.
Everybody cuts off, yes. They put a lot of people in.
What's the rate right now, is that one and now is from the old rate and rates?
So, um, so what, this is an amendment. Uh, right now, um, you don't have to get a permit unless it's five hundred dollars.
Correct.
At this point, we're going back to one hundred dollars to get a permit, and the cost for that would be uh, from one hundred to uh, four hundred ninety-nine, the cost for that permit would be twenty-three dollars and fifty cents.
So you're going for five, we went to five hundred, but now you want to go back to a hundred dollars?
Yes, but what we've seen in that, uh, over these years is people have both will save the work instead of five hundred, and it ends up being more. There's debris in the alley. We have a coenforcement. They're constantly, it, it's just a hassle. Um, with, with owners stating that it is less than five hundred dollars, in fact, it's not. You start seeing there's not more than that.
Well, you could tell if it's five hundred, I don't know, because materials alone are skyrocketing now. He's like, well, it's through your roof. I don't agree with that, going back to a hundred dollars. Matter of fact, I was even thinking sometime in the future to raise it to a thousand dollars, but we're gonna get done at a house that is a hundred dollars. You know? And here, we want to try to help the residents to, you know, beautify their home and stuff like that. You know, if we just hit it with a real tax that's gonna start in January now. More in the permit to a hundred dollars, I don't think it's a good idea.
The, the cost of a permit, uh, the cost, the cost to obtain a permit. It's the cost of a permit is twenty-three dollars and fifty cents. So I don't, I don't see that as being excessive to an owner. But, and it gives us an opportunity to go expect to make sure that's, just, we, we constantly have to bring, you know?
Yeah, I'd say, when you go, and you go, and you could tell if it's more than, you know, five hundred, just on the cherry. So.
Councilwoman Gonzalez, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're right, you're correct.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So when you explained this last, um, time you came up here, I, I do agree to the council, then Garcia, and I'm glad it only went on first reading. Um, we are raising rates, channeling with the real tax, with other, and I think other, uh, sewer water, that's all coming. And I know the city has to recoup funds somehow. I just don't think this is the way to it. So, just to let you know, um, yeah, I just think we need to find other ways, uh, to, to monitor, you know, what's going on and raise, uh, that, that fee for it.
Councilman Ransford.
Uh, yes, uh, good evening. I was wondering, did we do any type of cost analysis as it pertains to what, you know, uh, the benefit of actually having, you know, staff from the office do, you know, ride up to admit and do go out and do an inspection and, and in terms of the revenue that it will generate, the cost analysis just separating the two, because obviously we're using those manpower dollars to go out and do uh, site business on a hundred-dollar inspection. Is that necessarily a wise way of using our resources? First, like you say, if we see debris or whatever in the alley and do think, you know, whatever is more than its amount of dollar, then you do whatever, you know, take any necessary steps. That way versus just going and doing the site business on every hundred-dollar inspection, how much, you know, overtime or anything of that nature to do, we consider prior to, uh, preventing this proposal.
I, I believe that, that, like you mentioned, almost anything is over five hundred dollars, right? So any little thing that you do for you, for us to get permits by at a hundred, I don't, I don't foresee too many permits coming in that are gonna be between one hundred and four hundred, that's gonna be more than five hundred for the most part. So, but at least it doesn't give them any excuse to not obtain a permit. Or that we know that it'll be pretty, so I don't, I, I believe even a door right now costing you five hundred dollars a season.
Councilman, we have one more question. So if there's a rain over a hundred dollars with pork, if I had to, and, I mean, my materials for a new lock, you don't think I'd have to get a permit for that? What's the penalty? If you see me put the new lock in, put the, what's the penalty for that? Because they will write an ordinance and they'll give you a ticket. What's the penalty for someone employing over a hundred, you know, if it's over a hundred dollars, you know?
If you don't, if you don't get a permit, it'll be two hundred fifty.
So if I change my lock and change that and then write me a ticket, it's gonna be two hundred fifty, yeah. I just, I don't, it's, it's, then we can't do anything. Does that make sense? We're gonna get a house. Thanks, because everything's just, everything's cost so much now. So I think it should stay the way it is.
Councilman Hill.
Yeah, either way it goes, you know, you have somebody landlord probably trying to cut corners and do things cheap way. And you put all the debris in the alley, which I sit in my district and then I got called. Uh, Mr. Robinson come get this, but then again, if I see the landlord, I'm gonna get a dunk. But anyway, they can be cheap and get out of paying money, that's clear to, for the work on our, oh, department.
I think what, uh, Councilman, Councilman Orange.
Yeah, I was gonna say that because we're trying to beautify the city, and I think that uh, landlords really should not be penalized, uh, for trying to fix up their property. I mean, you can tell them for the landlord and just the owner trying to mix up the thing. When you guys are probably already giving them a ticket because they didn't have something, or the roof wasn't right or something like that, and then every little penny counts. And, um, I just, like I said, and then another thing is that people are saying, because they've told me that it takes so long to get the permit. You go in, you, you know, you gotta do this, or I gotta go out, see what you're doing, come back, and everything like that, and you know, it's a lot of time. So it's not like you go in, get a permit, say, hey, I'm putting a lock on the door, and I'm getting a permit. It's not like that. They gotta come out and see what they've done, get the little things we can put in the window and all that kind of stuff. And before, I remember, because Councilman, um, Santos was wanting to change this. It was originally a hundred. And he changed it. And, uh, he said, putting the floor to, uh, fix up their houses. And I, and, and first I couldn't understand it, because I knew a lot of landlords, especially coming out of Chicago, was coming in. Uh, wasn't getting a permit, doing all their work and everything like that, but yeah, seemed to be zero in on the homeowner's instead of the landlord. But I see that, because you can tell. All that stuff in the alley. Somebody should be giving them a ticket, because you know that, I, I got one right across the street from me, and I haven't seen the ticket yet, but somebody, they got all kind of debris in that yard they supposed to be fixing up. So like I said, I, I just don't see punishing the homeowner for fixing up, um, their property.
So I just wanted to make mention, I think when Councilman Ransford stated about the cost analysis, not on the individual, but on the city. How much are you guys gonna exhaust with having at every single? So if we all do what we're supposed to, that means you're gonna have more individuals getting permits from the one dollar, or the one hundred to the four ninety-nine mark, which means that more of your workers are gonna be out and get called. So right now, we can't, um, we can't already give permits at a quicker, a quick time. So now we're gonna have even more. Now we're gonna have more individuals go out, check them twice. And that means it's gonna be more overtime. So I don't know if we thought this thoroughly before even bringing it to us, but I think that's what should have been done first, was the cost analysis to the city as well as to the residents. And what you guys, I mean, what do we want to do here? Unify the city or not? And spend the money or not? We're not getting any money, that's the reason why we want to raise the rates. But then you're gonna get more overtime.
But it has, of course, the fee, twenty-three dollars and fifty cents is not much. It's the benefit also having a senior city, uh, of being able to, you know?
Correct. That's, so. You're right, forty-eight dollars is not gonna, is not even probably an hour of overtime for you guys.
And it's not overtime, because it'd be thirty working hours.
So you think? Uh, can we roll council this time?
Gonzalez.
No.
Hill.
Yes.
Garcia, no. Orange.
No.
Ransford.
No.
Monroe. Hernandez Orange.
No.
Next ordinance on second reading. Ordinance twenty-five, that zero zero one eight, Council Mayor Anthony Copeland. Salary ordinance for appointed officers and employees of the city of U.S. Chicago.
So move on second reading, and then, bro.
Second. Councilwoman Garcia makes a motion for approval, Councilman Monroe seconded the motion. On second reading, um, any questions? Councilman.
And we're gonna pay charter speakers?
Thank you.
Question?
Thank you.
Has there been any change from last year to this year?
Actually, yes, I have to say that we had, uh, we think we've made some increases. On page two, we've increased the high end for, uh, M. Awards to sixteen hundred by week. And we've also made some increases and adjustments in public works as far as the salaries are there. This page seven.
I tell you what, can we, for our next meeting, all the increases, can we put them in red? Because that would give you for all of us to understand, we know what's going on.
Yes, I can do that.
Any other questions?
Any other additions to this that we can add to this? Any new positions?
What I've done is I took the positions that were on the ordinances for sanitary and water and added them, so that we have a comprehensive document.
So no new positions then?
Um, bridge attendant, uh, what? Uh, morning. No new positions.
I know the bridge attendant, um, no, we got rid of that at the time, then we took it back from the common. So we paying that out of our, um, general budget or the common paying for that?
I'm not sure if it's coming out of county, but it was still on the original sound ordinance from far as we hear. And I do have it right off, that we did have a position of security. Because we found that there was something we found over on one of our buildings.
What is security, are they? Where it?
Self-pardon, so, yeah.
Um, can you find out if the county's paying for the bridge thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Ransford, can you?
Yeah.
Monroe.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes. Orders is on third reading.
We have two ordinances on third reading. Order is twenty-five, that zero zero one two. Chicago sanitary ordinance for appropriation and tax rates for year twenty-one six.
No motion? I'm going. Councilwoman Orange makes a motion for approval. Second. Councilwoman Gonzalez seconded the motion. Any questions? Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, ma'am. Um, is there any, the breaks going on? Nineteen six. Back here. Actually.
No, I think there's going to be some issues to be, like, seven, I'm going to.
Have you guys did a cost analysis, because I know that's the year that, most like, uh, what's our number?
Uh, we haven't done it in a couple months, I think we're first in four months, so let's see what we're doing. Uh, whereas the, because we're still a champion of the rest of the community. Uh, maybe if we're gonna take another tax issue. Uh, we're gonna go Wednesday, and I just thirty, forty percent lost. It would be that's something that we have to tax. As opposed to communities that are more than, we had more industry than we getting. Add more industry than we're getting. We just have to, we want to see that most industry, they move in. Every neighborhood, because of the fact that when we lose it, something's happening. But that person has been a bunch of.
The whole woman that takes being a break also.
But that's, that's common. When they're given homework break, that's like the homework. But when they decide to make this cut, the industry, it's not, there's no consideration when how we're gonna fund that. When we get seventy percent of our tax from the industry. So, well, that's when we're taking thirty, so it's like in revenue. We're just tied it together that if you look at our comparison, we have a base of forty-five, forty-six. We're just gonna lose in gay and four million. We're supposed to get twenty-five. But there's a lot back there. In fact, the governor, we actually have done everything the governor was doing. And we can say, we've cut departments. We've cut costs. We were already there. We were at the dates. The legislature and the ask, the legislature said cut. I don't see how they recorded. They don't see under the, they, they, is your president thirteen or we're gonna pick?
Just wants to guess to find out where that. For next year, yup, next year is just what I'm saying, if you get that. And so that those taxes, we don't get a deducted that we need this council probably got to move onwards on the budgets in the next couple of years. That we need to, and learn this from this past, uh, this call.
Yeah, because that's just us school system library. Everybody depending on property tax. Really, that's all.
Any other questions? Uh, Councilwoman Garcia, I agree. Um, definitely is that, but there's rumor that there's a possibility of Amerisart closing within the next three years. So that's also an issue. Um, and depending, uh, whatever federal. Where is in the federal government is whether or not at twenty-eight will be able to have some type of help. Um, they believe there is a surplus. So that does, that is gonna be able to help us to get to twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Some cities won't even get there. So.
Just to mention, I know, um, I thought somebody had Amerisart. Uh, I know they can, they're gonna get rid of the boat and they can start. I haven't been going hand base, but that's something to come up.
Any other questions?
Could I bring up the point on the, the previous order twenty-five, those are twenty? When you mentioned in public hearing?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we ever had public hearing for federal grants.
It's still an appropriation. That's why I asked you before the meeting. Is it being appropriated or not? If it's appropriated from one fund to another, it needs public hearing. When you, when you submit appropriation ordinances, they're form submissions. And on the first paragraph, it says it's being appropriated from one fund to another. So if it's not being appropriated, it doesn't need a public hearing. But if it is, it does.
We have two funds, federal grant, state grant, or commission. We used to, because they're reversible, we usually put that money in the federal grant, this is a federal grant. That's a mercy on top. And so what we do, once we spend it, we. The department will send a receipt, so we can write that.
We can just move forward on that and then still through our next meeting.
Okay. The reason we're gonna consider tiny census and then we're moving, that's. The federal government is actually cutting off that, that they have been.
I understand. Well, it might be that it doesn't need an appropriation at all is the point. But when it comes to us and it says it's going from a fund line item to another, it's an appropriation.
There's a, you have a reason when I heard.
Thank you. Thank you. Rowan Hopless?
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Fransford?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Hernandez, or?
Yes. Ordinance for.
Next ordinance on third reading, ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero one three, Chicago civil city ordinance for appropriation and tax rate. For the year is May twenty-sixth.
Councilwoman Garcia makes a motion for approval. Councilwoman Rose, that is the motion. Are there any questions? Mr. Clark, Rowan Hopless?
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Fransford?
Yeah.
Monroe?
Yes.
Hernandez, or?
Yes.
Any resolutions?
We have one resolution scheduled. Resolution twenty-five dash zero zero one zero, sponsor Mayor Anthony Corkle. Resolution of the common council of the city of Chicago to permit the acceptance of grant funding by the city of Chicago. So moving first, second reading? Oh, thank you.
Councilwoman Hill makes a motion for approval. Councilwoman Garcia, that is the motion. Any questions? Uh, so this is just a resolution accepting, right, but technically it hasn't been.
If you can accept it and then regard it, okay, so I'm sure.
Any other questions? Councilman, I mean.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Fransford?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Hernandez, or?
Yes.
And I'd add a resolution to that.
Quite a word. Um, I, um. I know all of us have just received resolution twenty-five zero zero one one. I have to, I'll, you can. Councilwoman Garcia to hold off until next meeting. And so this resolution is actually. Um, we're able to read it. Um, I'm gonna give a brief synopsis of how. Paperwork or resolutions or this should be. Uh, submitted. This should have been submitted on Wednesday, by Wednesday of last week. That way, we often read it, we often ask questions to our council. I.
I'll ask questions. You're right. We're gonna send it to committee. Are there anyone? Is there a second to send it to committee? So the second by Councilwoman Rose, go send it. No. She asked that it's committee. Is there a second to send it to committee? Even though we want to vote on it, correct? Correct, no.
You don't have to vote on sending it to committee.
So then after she asked that, then we get to the board, correct? Okay, we'll send that to committee.
It dies if it doesn't get a second to add it to the agenda.
Well. So then now we have a second.
A second.
Well, then vote to add it to the agenda or not.
So, uh, there's a first and a second to add it to the agenda.
If we don't add it to the agenda this time, we can add it again.
Add it at any point, okay.
Be able to discuss right now?
Is it, it's discussion time, so, yeah.
Correct. So, so again, I'm gonna start off. So if, if there's a first and a second.
There was a first and a second.
So then we're going to now go into any discussion regarding the, there's a first and a second.
If it's voted on, then if it gets accepted, then you, uh.
There, you, she's discussing on whether to add it to the agenda or not.
Correct, yeah, correct. So we can discuss it now. Okay, what day is it going to be? So are there any comments, questions?
Yes, I started over.
Sure.
Again, this should have been given to us or given to the third on Wednesday. So we could have looked it over. We could have asked questions to our council. And came as a group to discuss this. I really liked the way Hammond did theirs. Where they actually came as a group, as a council, as a city. And discussed it with the mayor and also the chief of police. So until then, I will not, until next week, I will not vote this on. The agenda until next week, until we have had proper, um, time to look at this. And I was very, uh, taken aback when I saw this because I saw it on social media. Before I was even informed about it. So that there, right there tells me that. I know I was not aware of this. Uh, I don't know if any of my other colleagues was aware of this. And I just think that. There is a proper way to do this, especially this something so important. That we vote on to make sure that we're able to look it over. This, this resolution. Is identical, if I'm not mistaken, to Hammond. That might not be okay for Chicago. So we really need to take this into consideration when we're voting. That's why I will not vote for this to go on the agenda today. However, if it is brought up next week, I will happily do that.
Yeah, usually it's gotta be done before that Wednesday. But our attorney was out of time. She was on medication. Couldn't get it done till, uh, now. So there's plenty of things that have came up at the last minute and this council has taken it up. And put stuff on it together. And to me, with this was going on, with this integration. So this is a little mission that we need to take care of now, I feel. Uh, they're snatching people off the streets. They just snatched a mother off the street this morning. Uh, it's pretty plain English in this, uh, resolution. This acts in them not to use city property. That's all, that's all it is. That's all of it.
Councilwoman Ransford?
Uh, yes, uh, obviously I want to express the fact that I'm in full support of anything that's gonna make, uh, the residents in my community feel. Safer, but at the same time, we gotta ask ourselves, are we putting our community at a higher risk? Through ICE by putting something out without doing our proper due diligence? And. In that case, do we, are we looking for them to say, okay, I'm gonna show you guys. What we actually can do and how much power you have. But if we do it, uh, with our proper due diligence and ensure. That we're doing everything within the scope of our authority, I believe that is the best course of action. And again, um, when you reached out to me, I'm, you know, full of support of doing whatever. We can to ensure that our community, you know, made it safe and within the power of whatever we can do, but at the same time. But this just put more of the microscope on us. And that's what we have to fear right.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rose.
Thank you. They are already here.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so things we need to be taking care of fast now.
Any other comments, uh, Councilman?
And, uh, as you know, since they did that in Hammond, uh, Mayor McDermott did it in Hammond, they've been out almost every day since. I had to be real aggressive over there in Hammond. Why? I don't know if they're trying to get revenge on it, but I don't like that it's not committed. But what can we do other than tell it don't be on our federal grant project? You know, I, I don't like it whatsoever. I want to protect my residents in the third district. I have a lot of them out there. So.
Any other, go ahead.
If, if. If you wait to next week, but you'll vote yes, when you can vote today. It's gonna be the same.
Any other questions?
They come in regardless.
Any other comments?
Don't cut me off.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Orange?
Okay, so, um, Attorney Jones? Who are we arguing? I can be able to sanction, sanction where the city. And at the end of the day, they came after us for that. What kind of teeth in the orders to stop them from doing anything?
Well, I'll tell you what. We thought we were in good shape with the welcome city ordinance. And that the attorney general didn't have the authority to bring a lawsuit against us. And then the attorney general went and got the legislature to change the statutes and broaden his authority so that he could bring a lawsuit against the city. I don't trust that that's not gonna happen in this situation. He may have gotten dismissed out of the St. Joe lawsuit, but what's to say he doesn't go back to the legislature, who's gonna give him whatever he wants? And then he turns around and sues the city. And in the meantime, it's, doesn't have teeth. I guess it's to be known later.
Yeah, any other comments?
Has it worked in any other city so far? I don't know. This is brand new. The fact that, the fact that it just passed in Hammond. There's no evidence that it's, it's helping. There's no evidence that it's hurting. We don't know. So, I mean, I would caution everybody to make sure you're thinking about the citizens in both ways. I would be concerned about broadening the target.
Can you get to go? Any other questions?
Yeah, just my last comment. ICE is here. Alright. They're here every day. They're in Hammond every day. Just because we pass it, that's not, they're gonna say, oh, we're going after them people more. They care. They're doing what they gotta do. And we gotta do what we gotta do to protect the residents. You know, if something comes down the pipe, like happened with, uh, residency or not residents, but, uh, Waukesha City. If they come down, we might have to change it. We change it, you know, but they came after us when we did the Waukesha City, right? We gotta back off. I don't want to back on, back up on this. They're snatching people, not giving people due process. At all. Snatching people off the streets. It's crazy. No, and I just wanna, if we pass it today, it'd be great. This is just stating, order is just stating not to unify the city. That's all.
Councilwoman Gonzalez? You who are trying to. Pass something that does nothing. Everything that you just said, they're snatching people off the street. They're, they're gonna be able to do that. They're, they're gonna be able to do that.
So we're not gonna have our personal audience?
So I don't understand either of that. Why you think that this ordinance is gonna comfort everybody and solve a problem? It's not gonna solve a problem. It's gonna put a target on East Chicago is what it's gonna do. And I can't, uh, not this time. And if we talk about this, if it was well properly the first time as a council. Talking to the chief of. I don't understand how you're gonna enforce, how are you gonna enforce this? We can't force this. Because they can come, if they're not gonna come on police property or city hall property, they'll go across the street to a abandoned building. We can't, the things that you are saying, we can't enforce. And I, I hate that you're, you're giving, trying to give people some comfort when you. You can't even enforce this ordinance.
So just a final comment before we vote on this. Um, and I want to say as a councilwoman of Mexican American descent, first generation on my mom's side. I stand here tonight angry, scared, and at times feeling defeated by what's happening in our community. What I will not do is put citizens of East Chicago in danger. I cannot and will not support the passing of any resolution that holds no real merit, which. As of tonight, we don't know if it does or any has any legal strength. I will not stand by to see another situation where we must repeal a measure later. Just as we did with the sanctuary city ordinance. Our residents deserve thoughtful, informed. And proactive action, not reactionary politics. It's also deeply distasteful that Councilwoman Garcia chose to introduce this resolution without informing his colleagues in advance. Most of us learned about it through Facebook, not through professional communication. If there was enough time to make the calls to have people show up, then there was enough time to call your colleagues. I reached out to our attorney previously. Who made it clear that before passing any such resolution, we need to meet, discuss. And understand what could actually be done and have some teeth behind what we do. Make sure it's legally and effectively for our community. And to consult with our neighboring cities to see if there was any repercussions from what was passed. If our true goal is to protect, then let's do so with intention, strategy, and not with haste. Send your email at nineteen AM today. After I sent you a text message of what is this? And rushing to push a resolution forward is not working with the body to make responsible decisions. For the safety of our community and our residents. Let's work together. Let's work responsibly. Let's craft something up that really means something. That really protects our residents as well as having the best stance. Mr. Clark, Rowan Hopless? Mr. Clark?
No, that's not right.
Rowan Hopless?
That's not correct.
Ballot?
I don't see it, man. It's not correct.
Bill?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Warren?
No.
Fransford?
No.
Monroe?
Yes.
Hernandez, or?
No. I would like that we talk with our president and we find out who can scan this committee to actually write something that is legally scanned. So I don't know that sort of policies. Um, if that's, I think, Councilwoman Gonzalez, if we can make that happen, I would really appreciate that. Thank you. Any new business?
I'm glad you.
I know that United Ring is not here today. So now, if we keep on having outbursts, you can have them removed also. Do we have any other new business?
Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, uh, Attorney Jones, the bill that got that resolution. She wrote it.
I did not write that resolution.
But she sent it to me.
Hammond wrote that resolution.
Yeah, and I wanted to take it. And I wanted to take a look at it and then if you haven't changed anything, then you should change, you sent it to me. But I'm not going to immediately put you send it to me, he has an attorney for this council.
Certainly sounds like it, uh.
But uh I just wanna say we had Veterans Day coming up uh next month. And the memorial, everybody, I don't know if everybody got the invitation for the memorial for that day. Uh which I think is gonna be on the tenth of. Uh please come, you know. Yeah, I seen it on. Facebook, so uh please come to the memorial, it's a, it's gonna be the opening of the memorial. Um also, October tenth was the day that. The East Chicago uh folks are all sitting hard was dedicating some era more bonus. And that's another uh veteran that we had, but uh they, they got. Named in this, October tenth, November anniversary, we just had it asked. Please come to the memorial.
Well, something I'd like to say, I noticed back in the day, everybody was talking about our police uh army. However, I notice we are increasing our officers, because I've met four new officers within the last four weeks. And I commanded the mayor and the chief getting out more new officers and I guess, so you do. We had a good office back there, so people are doing their man.
Any other questions?
Uh I don't know, I don't know if I can say this, can I say this resolution for every.
You need to make a motion to add it to.
I like to make motion that.
Second.
There's a first and a second, so yeah. Is there any questions?
I can read the resolution out.
This is the same thing where you bring it, we don't have it.
It's an honorary street designation.
I mean, if we're gonna start presidents for a while, let's start presidents for the Sunday.
It's your call as the president.
I don't know, you're right. So uh they can put it on the agenda, but if we could vote it and then bring it back. Is there any questions regarding the resolution? Can we, add it table?
Intake it, yeah. Whatever you want with it. I don't submit resolutions to the clerk until they're approved. That is the job, so until it's approved, the clerk doesn't get it from me. So if there's any expectation that a resolution's gonna be fifth meeting, it's gotta be approved. I don't, I don't just submit resolutions on my own.
You said Stacy did, which who did it, and you gave me a number of accounts.
Correct.
Now that's what you said.
It was not approved by the person who asked me to write it.
Say that before meeting.
Oh my god, so the fact of the matter is that um I'm going to ask the table this resolution, is there a second to table? There's a second on the floor to table the resolution. And this is gonna be brought back in our next meeting and we all had it for us. Um is there any questions regarding that? Mr. Clark, please.
Gonzalez. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Garcia, no. Orange.
Yeah.
Ransford, yes. Monroe.
No.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Now, you move to public expression. During public expression is that it's gonna be heard when called by the clerk. Please state your name, address, keep calm for three minutes. Avoid using non-language personal texts or using inflammatory remarks towards council members and county staff. We have Juan Fernandez.
Well, we'll do it on my Thanksgiving, but. All right, Juan Fernandez, uh thirty nine, cop, that's a little work. The greatest uh American. I mean, activists, we're all community activists, I, I hear that in the campaign stuff from every one of you guys, that you guys are the activists. The greatest people in United is in American history, the guy by the name of Martin Luther King, who's all of us probably know who he is. Said the greatest thing ever. Darkness can become our betrayal. I do understand why some of you guys don't wanna vote for someone off the wall so fast like Councilwoman Garcia. And I do understand this is unprecedented, blah, 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 all that stuff. But the problem is when something like this happens and we wait three days, we wait, or we, we wait three hours. There's a little kid that's gonna see their parent get. Their due process not, um, they're not gonna have their due process. We're gonna see a little, a little Latin kid, a little black kid, a little white kid in the city, see someone get taken off. That's not American way, especially if they don't have their rights as an American, as a person that's in America. That's what the Constitution, it doesn't take American citizens, if you're in America, you have two process rights. Still violating in this city, city of immigrants, it is the biggest city of immigrants, in my opinion, of all time outside New York. And when, when you guys say that, we need to wait, we need to wait that no one put it apart, wanting to get their due process right. The moment comes now where you guys have to say, the mayor should be here right now, this is emergency. The chief of police should be here right now, because you wanna know why? Because that's what, right then, you guys start talking, figuring it out, but the more you wait, the more you, what is getting violated. And I get the whole thing about, blah, 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 like I said again, blah, 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 so it was last minute, but sometimes last minute means, you know. Bad things happen, you gotta make sure you do this emergency, you don't wait, you start going at it right away. So um even if there's flaws in it, that's why you have a lawyer, that's why the city has lawyers, that's why there is a surplus. To fight for these things, right, it's why that one is there. The greatest, the greatest of all time, the greatest, my savior was a Palestinian Jew immigrant, I mean refugee. It was against authoritarian state. And what ICE is doing is showing that they're an oppressor and we are being oppressed, or someone will know that's being oppressed. So if you guys are all like I am, you know, Jesus is my savior, just know he was against this what's going on right now in America. And all over the world with this. With, with immigrants, you know, it's violated, yeah, I get it. But I just wanna say that, please find it in your heart, try and call on mercy, we. Councilman, first is the councilwoman, fifth is the councilman. You guys gotta work together, council president, gotta work together, councilman at large, you guys gotta fight because you know what, there's a lot of, lot of things that are gonna happen. Because right now, today it might be an illegal immigrant, tomorrow they might not get their cousins' lawyer. Thanks.
Thank you.
No, I have a motion for adjournment.
Take most of the term.
Uh Councilman Hill makes me second amendment, Councilman Randy, that is the most.
I'm sorry, go.
Gonzalez. Hill. Garcia. Orange. Ransford, yes. Monroe. Hernandez Orange.
Yes.